I would not call the council closed session to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Ms. Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
I'm here.
Councilmember Kasakian?
I'm here.
Councilmember Kasakian? Your microphone is off. Councilmember Kasakian? Okay, read the next name so maybe we come back.
Councilmember Najarian?
Najarian?
Everybody left the meeting.
What happened?
Everybody left the meeting.
Councilmember Najarian?
I think they thought they were supposed to close.
Right, yes.
I mean, they're not supposed to close.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. So I guess we can have the, yes, Mr. Van Muyden?
You have, Mr. Mayor, you have three, so you have a quorum in order to...
Okay, we have a quorum, so okay.
And I would have to read this into the record.
Okay.
Closed session, 1-8 conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Alain and Michael D. Garcia, Jilin Van Muyden, Matt Doyle, John Tuktalyan, Sylvia Lanzus, and Michelle Flynn. The names of the employees organizations are Glendale City Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, and Glendale Firefighters Association.
Ms. Van Muyden, do you anticipate reporting out on any item?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will now recess into closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 6, 2021 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from the county Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronic. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and Charter Channel 6 and AT&amp;T Ubers Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcia.gov by scrolling all the way.
Anyway, this meeting again, because I guess my microphone was not on. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T Ubers Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcia.gov by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Jeremian. I will lead the flag salute. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pray to the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Agajanian.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. This evening, we pray for peace among the nations, in our communities, and in our hearts. Guide our council in exercising wisdom in all their decisions. We also ask that you grant understanding of the council's decisions to those watching from home, and may all our actions be accordance to your will. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be the agenda for the April 6, 2021. Regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on March 30, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be three presentation and appointments, 3A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, April 13, 2021. The regular Housing Authority and City Council meeting for April 13, 2021 has been canceled. The next regular meeting, meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, April 20, 2021.
Thank you. I guess now is the Senator's turn? Okay, Senator, welcome to this, our session in this meeting, and thank you for what you're doing in Sacramento. So, and I see some changes. Did you change anything?
I got a haircut.
Okay, thank you. We are here to listen to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it, and let me congratulate you on your year as mayor. Obviously, this has been an unprecedented year of the pandemic and fell during your tenure on the City Council, so thank you for your service to Glendale. I'm happy to be here and council members, and thank you for letting me come share a little bit about Sacramento. I also want to give a congratulations to the new city manager, Rubik. Congratulations on being appointed city manager. It's an exciting, exciting opportunity, and I wish you well. And obviously, my office is here to help any way we can. You all know Arda Chaki and my deputy who serves me in Glendale, and, you know, we're both available for whatever, whatever we can do to help the city of Glendale succeed and prosper, so thank you. For being so welcome. Absolutely, and you guys are always very welcoming to Arda as well, and I just want to appreciate the warmth that she receives from all of you serving the city of Glendale and the state of California. Obviously, I'm proud to be your state senator and have my district office. We just moved offices from Broadway to Glen Oaks, and so, once the pandemic's over, we'll have a welcome reception like we did when we opened up the original office. So, we found a nice new space, and we've moved in there, and I know the city's already moved the street sign for us, so thank you for doing that, and happy to stay in the city of Glendale. And as I was telling Councilmember Brotman, I rode my bicycle to the office last Monday and almost made it all the way home. I made it to, just to the hospital, didn't make it up the final hill, but I'm going to continue to try to ride my bike more and ride to office to Glendale. Last week, or two weeks ago, the supervisor, Barger, and I held the town hall on vaccines and focus on pediatric health as well. I've been noticing that a lot of the focus has been on adults, so we wanted to focus on pediatric issues, and so we had some pediatricians and experts on children's health from Children's Hospital LA and Verduka Hills join us for the town hall. We also talked about some of the housing-related issues and the rent relief issues, and so that's available on my website. If any of you haven't seen it or want to see it or want to share it, I encourage you because there's some really good information that was there. This year, the legislature's been focused on the pandemic like you have been doing, and I think so far, we've been doing pretty, pretty well with what we call early action items, things that would traditionally wait for the budget to be passed in June. We have accelerated. One was rent relief, extending the rent moratorium and the program where we offset 80% of rent or to stabilize the rental housing market, so that was done early. As you know, affordable housing and tenant issues continue to be on a lot of people's minds, and so we've tried to, to jump into that. Broadband access and internet are also important components that we're working on this year, and increasing housing production. I'll touch upon a few bills later. The governor signed SB 91, which was the tenant relief, and so that is very important. I don't know if you had an analysis of it, but I encourage you to drill down on SB 91 to see the landlord-tenant protections, as I said, up to 80% of, can be waived if the landlord agrees, and there's lots of incentives for the landlords to participate in the, in the process. The other thing that we've unveiled is the Golden State stimulus package, which creates up to $30,000. Well, if you earn less than $30,000, you can get a $600 one-time relief payment from the state. There's been heavily impacted service industries that we're also trying to help. Just before Christmas, the governor created a $500 million fund for small businesses, and that went like that. So we put another $2.1 billion into small business relief, and I believe Phase 5 just closed. There's going to be another phase. And what's exciting about the small business relief program is that if you applied for the first round and didn't get it, you keep rolling over as we continue to reload the money that's available to get up to $25,000. The Glendale Chamber of Commerce, you should know, partnered with my office to get the word out to small businesses, and so that was a great partnership. I partnered with all 17 Chamber of Commerces in my district, and Glendale played a role, a significant role in helping to get the word out to the small businesses in Glendale to apply. Another piece of the, sort of the small business relief package was our support for nonprofits. And as you know, Glendale and my district has a strong complement of nonprofits, and we wanted to make sure that they could tap into the relief grants as well. So I encourage the nonprofits to continue to, to apply for these one-time grants. And as I said, Round 6 opens on April 28 at 9:00 a.m. and closes on May 4. So that's very important. So Round 6 of the Small Business Relief Grant and the Nonprofit Grant opens up on April 28, so make sure you all apply. Over 350,000 small businesses and nonprofits applied for the first two rounds, and 40,000 small businesses were selected in the early rounds, and that number's going to continue to increase. As I said, Glendale was a, was a good partner. Specifically this year, given our school issues, and as you know, we just did $6 billion to help schools reopen, and Glendale Unified is reopened, and part of that was $2 billion in incentives to help pay for a safe reopening. One of the issues with schools was everybody wanted to return to in-person learning. The question was, how are you going to do it safely for teachers and students and administrators and staff? And so we wanted to provide significant financial resources to our school districts to pay for PPE and testing, and obviously, the governor last month made vaccinating teachers a priority, setting aside a significant amount of vaccinations for teachers to try to incentivize school districts to go back. So hopefully, we've accomplished that goal, and so our kids can be educated in a safe environment, and our teachers don't have to worry about that as well. And as of the 15th of this month, all, all adults are eligible to get vaccinated, and so I encourage everybody, when your opportunity to get vaccinated comes up, take it, because that's how we protect each other. And obviously, we have to continue to wear our masks. I was sort of chuckling to myself the other day. I did an interview where I said, "Wearing a mask is a sign that you love your neighbor." It's not a political statement, means you love your neighbor, and somebody took umbrage with that and went off on me on Facebook because he didn't like the fact that I inserted "love." And so, we can't as a society get to the point where we attack love. We have to really care about each other, and wearing a mask is a way to do that, and certainly getting vaccinated when available. This year, mental health issues are of significant importance, not just to me, but to the, to my colleagues as well, and I've authored legislation to train 50% of all school personnel. And I know Councilmember Devine, a former teacher, knows the importance of having this type of training for our school personnel. When I presented the bill two weeks ago, a father called in to testify about his 14-year-old daughter, who turned in her journal to her teacher for, as an assignment, and got an A on the journal, and then shortly thereafter, took her own life. And the father was not upset at the teacher for not seeing the warning signs of suicide in the journal, because the father understood that the teacher hadn't been trained to see those warning signs. And so, SB 14 seeks to train 50% of all school personnel on the warning signs of mental health issues so we can help get kids the care that they need. The other part of the bill is there's a flawed education code that doesn't recognize mental health the same as it does physical health. And so if you have a cold or a broken leg, those are approved absences from school. But if you're home with anxiety or depression or bipolar, there's a gray area that those may not necessarily be approved absences from school. And as we're trying to de-stigmatize mental health, we should treat physical health and mental health the same way. Teenagers shouldn't have to worry about whether their absence is going to be approved if they are up against a deadline or miss a test or something. They should be accommodated the same way that physical health is. And I was doing an editorial board the other day, and one of the editors said, "Well, what happens if a kid or a parent lies about the mental health issue?" And I said, "The fact that you ask that question is why we have to do the bill, because you don't ask if the parent lied about the cold in the note. Why would you assume that a mental health issue would, would cause somebody to lie, and you're not going to think that same way about physical health?" And so, if we're going to de-stigmatize mental health issues, we'd really have to do that. We can't just talk about it. SB 224 also creates a mental health curriculum, so students can learn about mental health in elementary school, middle school, and high school, because as we all know, any of us who have seen our children interact with other children, peer-to-peer interactions are extremely important to our kids. I heard a wonderful story the other day about a teenager, 13-year-old girl, who was worried about going back to school because during the pandemic, she had developed acne, and she was so relieved when she came home after the first day of returning in-person learning when she saw her peers had acne as well. It made her just feel better about herself. And so, having students understand mental health issues is critical to, again, creating that wonderful, safe, happy, cool, cool school community. Another issue that's very important to me is dyslexia screening. There's a recent study out of Texas that had seven out of 10 inmates in a particular prison were deaf, were dyslexic. And if you screen a child in kindergarten or first grade for dyslexia, it takes, it's four times harder to intervene if you wait till middle school than if you screen early, and it's three times more expensive to interject reading and other special ed needs later in schooling. So, the cheapest, best way to help a student thrive is to find out who is dyslexic in kindergarten, first and second grade, and how severe it is, so you can direct them to the proper treatment. So SB 237 mandates dyslexia treatment in schools. And so, I'm also trying to provide school districts with more flexibility on their before and after-school funding, so that bill is SB 328, which is in there. And finally, not finally, another bill related to children is on autism. Right now, there's a flaw in California's autism laws that only allow one particular autism treatment to be covered by insurance. And so if you're a parent whose child responds to other evidence-based treatments, you have to use your personal dollars to pay for those treatments, even if they're prescribed by your pediatrician. And so, my bill, SB 562, requires insurers to cover all evidence-based, doctor-prescribed, medically necessary autism treatments equally, and so we think it's going to make a big difference. Earlier, I talked a little bit about housing. Some of you are familiar with SB 15, my housing bill to take dormant retail space and incentivize turning that retail into housing. I'm sure Councilmember Najarian, who's been around the longest, knows that land use has been monetized to disincentivize housing and chase sales tax dollars. But with the dormant retail that's out there, a lot of cities wait for other stores to come in for decades because they'd rather have the sales tax dollars than the property tax dollars. So what SB 15 does is it estimates seven years of what the sales tax of that property would have generated, and then gives, gives that seven years of sales tax to cities to incentivize workforce and affordable housing on the dormant retail. Unfortunately, the pandemic is going to create even more dormant retail space out there, and it's an opportunity with the cities as a partner to incentivize workforce housing. So we're flipping the monetization of land use to incentivize workforce housing, and both the, the cities, labor, and the business community love the bill because it's incentive-based, and it works in concert with cities to prioritize workforce housing. Another bill that I'm proud of is SB 387, which seeks to flip police training. California is one of the few states in the country that doesn't require police officers to have a particular degree. Many states require an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree before you can become a police officer. California does not. And obviously, we've all watched over the past year how, you know, smart policing and police reform has become important to everybody, because what affects one of us affects all of us, and we've all been rocked by the images and the institutional racism and other implications of what's happened. But one of the things that we can do is make sure that those we recruit to be police officers have the best training and the best, most sensitive classes that are required to make you a, a good community member and a good police officer, in addition to the post-training that police officers get. So I'm working with the California Police Chiefs Association to create a 15-course requirement on what appropriate courses to help, whether that's intervention, or social work, or sensitivity, or other, other courses. I'm leaving it up to, to the educators to come up with this curriculum. And so, SB 387 is getting a lot of attention because it's helping to rethink the training of police officers. It also has a significant recruitment aspect of it to recruit more and diverse populations into serving in law enforcement. And so that's an important bill on that topic. The budget this year is actually in fantastic shape. We all were worried last year. If you remember, when the governor proposed his original budget last year, there were significant cuts, in particular to education, and the state senate pushed back significantly on the budgets, the governor's budget cuts, and worked in concert with the assembly to put a legislative budget on the table, and the governor moved towards us and ended up adopting our framework for the state budget. This year, the combination of the federal dollars and an increase in, in revenue to the state of California, we're going to have a significant one-time dollars that we're going to invest across the board, from education, to infrastructure, to housing, to helping local governments get through the, the challenges of the past year. So stay tuned for the budget news as they, it unfolds in the next month, but I think you're going to be very pleased in how it all, how it all turns out. Another thing I want to say is, you know from past years that I've chaired a select committee on California Armenian Artsoc, Art Trade and Cultural Exchange. That committee has been reauthorized, and I'm continuing to chair, and obviously, it's important for California, which recognizes Artsoc, to, to be sensitive, and it breaks my heart what happened over the past year in Artsoc. Councilmember Kasakian and I were actually in a wedding at a beautiful cathedral in Shushi, and to see that that cathedral has been destroyed, it's just unconscionable that the, the place we saw such joy has become such a place of pain and destruction. And so it's important that California has Artsoc in its title. I like to think that I enjoy a great relationship with the five of you, as well as your staff, and so I know you probably want to have a couple of questions, but that's sort of the big picture. We're going to focus on infrastructure. We're going to focus on some of the structural issues in California and take this one-time opportunity to deal with them as we all reopen the economy and get back to whatever normal in this new world looks like. I think Zoom and electronic media are here to stay. They used to say the airplane made the world smaller, but I think Zoom has made the world instant, and so we're in an instant time period, and look forward to hearing what your thoughts are as far as the state moving forward. I'd love your input, so thank you for letting me share a few little things of what's going on in Sacramento.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for what you are doing in Sacramento. Is there any question from my colleagues to Senator? Okay. Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you. I just want to have a few quick questions, since we want to benefit from the opportunity from our viewers and everyone here gathered, decision-makers, to raise some issues. Now, one of the issues, Senator, and thank you for always being a champion and advocate of local cities. I know that comes from your background in La Cañada when you served on the council and as mayor, and even in your time in your assembly, you were always championing our cause. These housing bills, however, have us very concerned, and in particular, concerned about historic preservation as mandates come down to build more and more housing in single-family neighborhoods. I'd like to ask you about what is being done for historical preservation and including language that preserves the historical character of our neighborhoods in the face of all these housing mandates from Sacramento?
It's a, it's a great question. Thank you, Councilmember. And, and that's an area where I had significant success in getting historic preservation inserted into the key, what they call the production bills, the housing production bills. If you remember, SB 50, the original production bill that went down three years ago, did not have adequate protections for historic preservation, and it was something that many of, many of us was one of the reasons why we opposed the bill, because it, you know, the character of our communities matters. We don't want everything to look the same, and we certainly want to appreciate the architecture of the past. And so, going forward, in particular, SB 9, I think it is, has historic preservation in it based on my request, and I'm going to continue to look at ways to refine it. I know some folks from Glendale have reached out to me with some additional ideas that I'm going to try to get in, but I adopted many of the protections that Glendale and Pasadena use in their, in their plans to, to make sure that we do protect historic preservation. So, you know, there's two ways to approach some of these housing issues. You can, you know, stomp your feet and give speeches, which look good on YouTube, or you can actually try to get the authors to make amendments. And so, I've been practicing the, if you don't ask, you can't get, and trying to negotiate the softer landings. Obviously, you know, I'm not going to succeed on every request, but if you just, you know, throw your hands up, you really don't get to make any changes. And so I've been trying to get some amendments put in place, and I was pleased that the historic preservation part did get into the bills.
And I, I know that you've been working on climate resiliency with SB 45 and a few other issues, but I don't want to, you know, we have a, a mayorship transition this evening, and I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to say thank you for the funds that you secured for the tech accelerator in Glendale. It was a million dollars, I believe, was it not? And it is really putting us at the forefront of the economic transition that Glendale needs to go to, go through for the future, for the next 50 years, and that is in no small part due to your great efforts in Sacramento. My question is, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, what else do you have for us, your favorite city in your district, Glendale, in terms of any funding that you can secure for us for any other projects that we are working on?
Well, you, you put me on the spot, but I will say that I did make a, a budget ash this year, talking to your chief, Carl Povolitis, has a very unique drug intervention program, and so I did ask for a million dollars for the city of Glendale to, to pilot this program. Carl, are you there? I'm going to put the chief on the spot, since you put me on the spot. Carl, Chief Povolitis, can you?
He's, he's coming to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, with your, with your permission, can Carl, Carl give a little overview? Sorry to put you on the spot, chief.
He's here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Senator Portantino. I think as you're all very familiar, one of the issues that we have is a, a large mental health-related issue, but since the passage, especially of Prop 47, one of the things that we noticed is the number of arrests that we make for drugs has been increasing, yet the ability to intervene and treat has not been there. And so, over the last couple of years, we've really been having a discussion about how could we expand our co-response and our mental health response and maybe go, as, as opposed to having people come to you, us being able to go out and intervene at an earlier process? Because if we don't change the underlying problems, and when we look at drug abuse, which can lead to mental health issues or mental health issues leading to drug abuse, like a chicken and an egg, but there's also an underlying issue of safety and sometimes crimes that are committed to support that, if we don't ever try to solve that underlying problem, then it's going to continue. And so what we'd like to do is try a pilot program here for a few years where we could put that expertise into the field, much like we do with our mental health person, and expand that, and see if we can bring that rate down.
Thank you, Carl. So I thought Carl had a great idea, so I've asked for a million dollars for the city of Glendale, so I've got my fingers crossed. And I've got a few other surprises up my sleeve, which I'm not going to unveil tonight, and then I'm glad Councilmember mentioned SB 45. I know some of you attended a town hall. I know Councilmember Brotman was there last year. We had about 300 people at Descanso Gardens. Brotman was there last year. We had about 300 people at Descanso Gardens to talk about SB 45. This year, I'm the principal author of it with Senators Allen and Stern. And just in the Santa Monica Mountains allotment alone, there's $85 million. The idea in SB 45 is to program money from the bottom up, not the top down. And so we're going to be programming $85 million to the Conservancy, which of course, Glendale sits in that jurisdiction. So as you expand and look at other programs, you know, we're hopefully going to get it on the governor's desk and get it on the ballot this next year. So it's a $6 billion Parks and Fire Resiliency and Water Preservation Bond that I'm pleased to be authoring on behalf of the state senate. It's one of our senate priorities. So there's a lot going on, a lot of early actions. There's going to be more movement on fire resiliency coming in the next month. There's going to be a lot more, a lot more coming, what we call early action items ahead of the June budget. So thanks for the questions. Anybody else?
Okay, Mr. Brotman.
Thank you, Senator Portantino. You say you're proud to be our senator, and we are equally proud to have you as our senator. And I wanted to butter you up a little bit because I'm going to have a request in a second. So I asked Arum if he could put up an image, because I'm not sure if everybody knows, and you look a little different in that image, but we'll put it up anyway, that I'm not sure everybody here or in the audience knows that you scored 99% on the California League of Conservation Voters Scorecard in 2020, getting an A. And especially for me, but I'm sure for all of us here, that makes us very proud. So wanted to acknowledge that and thank you. And now that I've softened you up, some of that SB 45 money would be very well used to do our Verdugo Wash project. And I can picture you on your bike, coming all the way from Glen Oaks, up the Wash, practically much of the way home, anyway. And it'll be a much better ride, and a safer ride than riding on some of our busy streets. So if you could keep that one in mind, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Obviously, we have to, Paul Ravinoff doesn't ride his bike enough, so we've got to provide more opportunities. And so, no, that's a great project, and hopefully, we can get it funded in the next allotment of resources. So thank you for bringing it up. And I don't know who that person was in that picture. Those cheeks weren't me.
Okay. Is there any other question from the senator? Thank you. Thank you, Senator, and hopefully, we'll see you soon in this chamber.
Yeah, we'll get back to normal. And I, congratulations again, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know who the new mayor is going to be, so whoever it is, congratulations, and I wish you well. And Arda and I are here to help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, joining us.
You got it. Take care. Bye-bye.
What's next, please?
Mayor, the next item is 3C, CERT Program Overview and Future.
Okay, Mr. Golania.
Yes, thank you, the mayor, members of city council. I'm going to ask Captain Payne to provide a presentation. This was a request that came through Councilmember Brotman recently. And he has a PowerPoint to share with you.
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is John Payne. I'm a fire captain with the City of Glendale Fire Department, and I am your emergency manager. Tonight, I'm going to share with you a brief presentation on our Community Emergency Response Hopefully, you can all see this presentation. Well, again, as I mentioned, I'm here to briefly speak to you regarding Glendale's Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT for short. CERT is a group of volunteers organized to support their community in times of need. It's supported by the fire department, and it receives its support by means of training and exercises by volunteers from the fire department, as well as others from the community. So what is CERT? CERT educates and prepares our neighbors within communities for emergencies and disasters. CERT members maintain readiness through training, exercises, and other events. CERT also supports the men and women of the fire department when called upon. A primary, a primary CERT focus point is community training. I'm happy to say that we will soon begin coordinating and organizing training events like our CERT basic training. Now, this training will help our community members to better understand what will happen in a widespread emergency event, and how they and their family members can be better prepared for it. So do we need volunteers? Absolutely, we do. Interestingly enough, most rescues in times of distress are performed by people of all walks of life. It's been said that 95% of all rescues are spontaneous. Yes, neighbors helping neighbors. In an emergency, first responders will be busy, and CERT members of the CERT team will ease the burden on first responders by allowing them to tackle the complex rescues while CERT stabilizes their homes and their communities. Once trained, CERT members will be able to educate their communities in disaster preparedness, and perhaps even perform light search and rescue operations, or certain medical services when needed. Now, due to the pandemic, Glendale CERT is transitioning to a hybrid training model in the very near future. It's online, it's self-guided, and state-certified. It's training that is approximately nine hours long to complete at someone's convenience. Now, this online hybrid training will be followed up by approximately 16 hours of hands-on training when the status of the pandemic recovery and safety protocols allow. So if you would like to join over 70 people within our community who have already expressed interest in CERT, I ask you to simply call the phone number provided, or look us up on our website, and you can have your name put on a mailing list when training becomes available. Now, that concludes my brief presentation on CERT. I'd like to open it up for any questions that you might have.
Is there any question? Yes, Ms. Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a friend who is CERT certified, and he had asked about this program coming back. Is this going to be like a refresher course for those that are already certified? Can they also enroll and take the class again?
Ms. Devine, that's a wonderful question. Thank you for asking. And yes, this program is open up to those who have already taken the online training or hands-on training at the time. And we will invite any of those who have previous CERT experience to reengage and to refresh their skills, either online, both online and hands-on, if they so choose.
Can you give me that phone number again, please? Or can we put it on the screen for those that might be interested?
Absolutely. It's 818-548-4800.
Thank you.
If you'd like, I could put that on the screen. Would you like that?
Yes, please, if you would. So our residents can see it, just in case they missed it that first time. There it is. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, is there a question?
Mr. Brotman. Question from Mr. Brot.
Yeah, John, thanks for this. And we've talked about CERT before. I know, so I had two things real quick. One, I know you reached out to some folks in Glen Oaks Canyon who have already kind of created their own homegrown program. Can you tell us a little bit about how that went, and whether, you know, there's a plan to move forward with them creating some structure around, you know, and support around what they're already doing? Because obviously, we know Glen Oaks Canyon is one of the more at-risk areas in our city because of the single egress and the fire risks there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking that. Yes, I've been in close contact with Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association, Ms. Isabel Myers. What a wonderful resident she is, very proactive. It's been extremely encouraging to see that neighborhood so interested in disaster preparedness, and how they can be better organized, you might say. We've talked at length about CERT, and we hope to bring CERT on a much more intimate level to that community. We're also having discussions on evacuation travel paths, as well as our alerts and warning systems, to make sure that we can provide the folks in that community. Because as you said, it is unique, what they need at the time they need it, so that they can make the best decisions. So CERT definitely is an important part of this component of disaster preparedness for that community.
Okay, thanks. And I'd, a request would be to definitely, you know, reach out to the other homeowners' associations, maybe through the Homeowners Coordinating Council or individually, and other neighborhood associations, and see, you know, to make sure they understand what this, what this offering is, and see if there are any others, like Glen Oaks Canyon, that really want to jump in and create some kind of structure, so that it's more than just individuals being trained. And then, you know, those skills are good to have, to take home, but getting that kind of community organization where we know who's in what household, and where we have people that are, you know, medically trained, and where we have people that have, you know, pets, or have disabilities, and just kind of having that, that information, and also having plans around how that community is going to respond in the event of, you know, a major earthquake, fire, or whatever it might be. So I would, and it's probably in your plans already, but it would be great if you could work on, you know, rolling that out to some of these groups.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Brotman. Actually, last night, I just, I was in a, the meeting with the Glendale Homeowner Coordinating Council. We discussed CERT, a very similar presentation to what I just presented to you here this evening. I've also met with Chevy Chase Canyon, and I'm talking with the folks out in Whiting Woods. I agree 100% with you. We have to continue to look for those communities that are not only geographically challenged, but also those in the communities that are the most vulnerable. So I will take your advice, your counsel to heart. I'll continue to reach out to other homeowners' associations, and beyond the homeowners' associations, neighborhoods that may not have the organization, the structure, to help them to be prepared as well. I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other question from Captain Payne? Okay. Thank you, Captain Payne, for coming and giving us the information. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, now, I guess it's time for me to speak. I was, and probably is, the mayor of the City of Glendale from April 2020 through April 2021. As such, I was the only mayor in recent memory to have served as mayor during an entire year of a worldwide pandemic, wartime mayor, war with coronavirus. All mayors and their spouses are invited to trips abroad, such as South Korea, Japan, Armenia. They are also regularly invited to events, dinners, receptions, trips, and travel, and such during their mayorship. Not only I did not, I did none of these. In fact, as all residents of Glendale have access to my cellular phone number, cellular phone number, and to my television studio office. I must have gotten thousands, thousands of calls, and hundreds of visits. My wife and the staff at the studio were also encountered with visitors asking about all types of help from me during the pandemic. My employers complained that they were unable to do their TV work, as our office was constantly visited by residents wanting help from me. To make matters worse, the city was closed for a long time due to COVID-19 situation. Of course, this is nothing new to me. I have been a TV host for the past 21 years, and managing two TV stations for 15 years. And due to my daily TV programs informing the public about political and social events, I'm always approached for help regarding housing, traffic, landlord/tenant building issues, among many other issues. During my mayorship, one of my main objectives was to act as a leader, mediator, and coordinator, not as an oracle. I wanted to give the most chance to my fellow councilmembers to voice their opinions, and not be the only one speaking solely because I am in the mayor's seat. I specifically wanted to avoid wasting city and the viewers and residents' precious time by merely repeating issues and statements already expressed by my colleagues. I only gave my input when it was different and/or necessary, and also when it was not covered by my fellow councilmembers. However, 2020 was an extraordinary year for all of us. What we found is that what makes a great city is not the events or activities that you have. What makes a great city is the community and how much we support one another. While we were really tested this year, we proved that collectively, we are strong, and that we are a great city. I would like to thank my fellow councilmembers, our city staff, our city managers, city attorney, residents, and businesses for supporting one another through this pandemic. We navigated through uncharted territories with the pandemic, constantly evolving with each state and LA County public health order. But the City of Glendale remained strong. The city council and I made sure to prioritize the well-being of our community and to ensure their health and safety. I, with the help of my colleagues, helped implement relief programs for those who were facing hardship from COVID-19, and we continue, will do it. Some of the programs we implemented were the low-income students and family rental assistance programs, and the emergency rental assistance program. These programs were funded by Measure S. We also purchased three properties that will be used to create 500 affordable housing units. That's what I'm proud of, and provided a financial subsidy of 300 per month, this is another program, for 24 months, to 1,000 qualified households through the monthly housing subsidy program. In addition to housing assistance programs, we implemented the Small Business Grant Program to help our small businesses that were affected by COVID-19 by giving them $5,000. We have helped over 176 small businesses so far, and we have the plan to continue to help others. We distributed over 10,000 gallons of sanitizer to our community members. To further help our businesses, my colleagues and I approved the Alfresco Outdoor Dining Program, which helps support our restaurants by creating protected parklets in order to allow them to move their operation outdoors. We also implemented the Slow Streets Program to alert drivers that the streets are being shared by pedestrians, cyclists, especially shared by pedestrians, cyclists, especially during COVID-19. This program reminds, reminds drivers to slow down and be observant of pedestrians and cyclists. We were one of the first cities in California to place a ban on the sale of Mylar balloons to reduce the dangerous impacts the balloons have on our city's power infrastructure and to reduce the number of power outages that affect our residents and businesses. The city council also voted to ban the sale of flavored tobacco. We established the Sustainability Commission whose goal is to advise the city council on environmental issues and encourage input and participation from all sectors of the community. I would like, I would also like to thank our police and fire department, the chiefs are present, for ensuring the safety of our community. I am proud to say that we experienced drops in all crimes, collisions and citations during the past year. Lastly, I would like to recognize our community partnership and hospitals, clinics, healthcare providers in helping us establish COVID-19 testing and vaccination sites which will be in coming weeks. 2,500 people will be vaccinated on Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday in Glendale Community College, which is a major undertaking by city and Glendale Community College and hospital, Glendale Adventist. Just this week, our fire department in partnership with Glendale Memorial Hospital began administering COVID-19 vaccines to homebound Glendale seniors at their residence. With that said, I would like to thank everyone for making my mayorship successful even during an unforeseen pandemic and unforeseen difficulties and strange time. I look forward to continuing to serve my community alongside my council colleagues and employees of city of Glendale. Thank you. And now, we have a task to do, I guess. How to do it, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Agajanian, I wonder if any of your colleagues have any words that they'd like to share?
Okay, is there, Mr., anybody has any comment?
I would, Mr. Mayor, and you, you did say, you did list an incredible amount of accomplishments this past year and in any normal year, that would have been an incredible amount, but especially in this year of the pandemic, it was an even more admirable achievement. So on my behalf, I thank you for your hard work. Hundreds, I'm sure there were hundreds, if not thousands of people coming to your door asking for help in every sort of problem and that's, that's what happens as being mayor and you being on your television program gives you an even greater profile and identity to the community. So I thank you and as the pandemic begins to taper off, you know, if President Biden can claim for beating the pandemic in the United States, I think we bestow upon you the honor for kicking the pandemic in the city of Glendale. So thank you very much for your, your good work this year, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian, former mayor. Thank you very much. Is there any?
Well, I won't say, is my mic, I won't say too many words, but I want to say thank you for getting us through this difficult time. And you listed a lot of the things, but you left off many, many, many things. If you had actually listed all the things that we did, we would be here for a long time. So it was a very productive year, I think, despite what we went through. I appreciate that you just kind of took it on the chin and, and just pushed through this difficult period and I'm looking forward to continuing with you as my colleague.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Brodmann. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Kasakian.
Mr. Mayor, you know, you said it, you said a lot in your statement, in your outgoing statement and certainly these last 12 months have been some of the most challenging. Certainly when we voted and selected you mayor, I don't think it crossed anyone's minds. I know it didn't cross my mind that 12 months later, we would be in this situation as a country, as a council. You know, I am sincerely sorry that some of the luster of what the mayorship has been in the past was lost in what was, as you mentioned, a historic event, one that we're still in, as you can see from people, from how few people are here this evening. Normally, your family would be here to share and celebrate your accomplishments and here we have just a few, the proud, dedicated city staff along with your colleagues and I think this is probably the only, the second time in the last 12 months that all five of us have been in these chambers together, but it is a testament for the respect we have of you and the work that you've done. I'm, I was very excited to see the UCLA Bruins make it as far as they did in the final four and then lose a heartbreaker of a game to Gonzaga, but when the coach of the Bruins was speaking about what his team did afterwards, he quoted someone that I have always admired, the late John Wooden, legendary basketball coach, the Wizard of Westwood. And he said, and he was speaking of his guys, he said, "True greatness is giving your best effort." And this has been a challenging year, but things happen for a reason and I believe it was meant to be that you took on the role of mayor during a pandemic. That is quite honestly, one of the most historic events that we are undergoing and experiencing and I was just telling my wife that, you know, our child will be talking about this experience when he's older about what he went through. You will go down in Glendale history for your role and in your leadership and even overseeing all the things that you said, picking the next leader, overseeing the process of selecting the city manager, one of the most important decisions that a council and a mayor oversees. It was great to work with you as a colleague on a number of issues and seeing your passion about housing and the people of Glendale and the seniors and I look forward to continuing that work as your colleague on the dais. So thank you for your service as mayor and look forward to all the things that are still to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. Ms. Devine.
Well, Mayor, I, I expressed the same feelings about the situation that you were put in. You took this pandemic in stride and your leadership with our council enabled us to accomplish everything that you mentioned and more. I appreciate your hard work. I appreciate your dedication to the city. I know that you care about the residents and the community and the welfare of our city and that is appreciated not only by me, council, staff, but everyone in our city, all of our residents. So I thank you for your, your hard work. I thank you for your service this year and kudos to you. Congratulations on a very good year.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine. Now, I guess, I guess, City Manager Golanyan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian. Just wanted to quickly, everything has been said, just wanted to quickly express my gratitude on behalf of all the women, women of the city that have worked for you and will work for you, for your being a mayor, for your service as the mayor during a year that was full of unexpected issues and concerns and as had been mentioned so many times, the most challenging and unprecedented year that we have experienced. Thank you for your leadership, your dedication and your unwavering support. We have a traditional small token of appreciation that we'll present to you. It's a gavel, but unfortunately, I ask that you only use it during emergencies. Well, with that, thank you again for your service.
I had to have it last year. It was emergency. Thank you, thank you very much. City Manager Golanyan, thank you very much. Thank you, each and every one of you who came here for the last, for saying goodbye to the mayor. Of course, I'd be here, I will continue. Thank you, everyone, and I will continue to serve this community. Thank you very much. Now, what's next now?
Next item would be selection of a new mayor. The business before the council is the selection of a mayor. The city clerk will now entertain nominations for the office.
Is there any?
I would like to make a nomination.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to nominate the, the most colorfully dressed council member on this dais. In all seriousness, nominate Councilmember Devine. She is very experienced, having been a mayor twice or once? Once, okay, so this will be number two, but also as current chair of the Housing Authority. So I know that you will keep us focused and on task, will be a great mayor and get us through what I think is going to be another tough year, not as tough as the one we just went through, but getting us out of the pandemic and through what's going to be still very tough financial times.
Thank you. Is there any other nomination or anybody wants to second?
Are there further nominations for the offices, Mayor? Hearing no further nominations, we will proceed to the roll call. Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine? Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Agajanian?
Yes.
Okay. I now declare Councilmember Paula Devine the duty-elected mayor of the city of Glendale.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, if you will give us one minute so we can swap the nameplates.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Brodmann for nomination and Mr. Kasakian, Councilmember Kasakian for the second. I want to thank my colleagues and the community for entrusting me with this position. Our shared goals to make our neighborhood stronger, safer and healthier are still at the core of who we are and the reason for everything that we do and every decision that we make. Together, I am fortunate to serve with a council that is forward-thinking, bright and willing to work as a team. I would like to commend Mayor Agajanian for his fine service during this incredibly difficult year of the pandemic and for his continuous pursuit of more affordable housing for our residents. We currently have over 400 units, as has been mentioned, in the pipeline and you have been a major advocate for this development. I recognize that the present pandemic has redirected our efforts and given new meaning to our priorities. However, we must look to the future of our great city and its recovery post-pandemic. We have much to do in the next year. As your mayor, I will look to working with my colleagues and staff to move toward a cleaner, greener, grace and repowering plan, continuing to strive for 100% renewable energy in our community, relying on a strong, viable plan and future technology that will enable us to reach the mandated 100% goal before 2045. Energy that is reliable, sustainable and affordable and above all, healthy for our residents. As your mayor, I will accept Mayor Garcetti's offer to join the Worldwide Coalition of Mayors advocating for climate change mitigation, that's the Race to Zero, and I have already scheduled a conference call on April 15th, which will be an international conference on climate change. In order to keep our residents safe as they walk and bike through our city, I feel that Vision Zero is a goal worth achieving. Rebounding from the pandemic, we must focus on economic resiliency. Everything we do will be through the lens of the COVID recovery. As mayor, I will work with my colleagues and staff to continue to support our business community. In all of their efforts, of course, to recover from this devastating year, we will work to ensure that our vitality and reputation as a destination city remains intact and that we experience a regrowth guaranteeing our fiscal sustainability. Yes, we have much to do, but we have much to look forward to as well. In the next year, our very successful tech incubator program, which we were discussing with Portantino just a few minutes ago, the senator, will begin. Our goal as a multimodal community will be tested. Our access to faster, more reliable transportation is on the horizon with the bus rapid transit in the works. I will continue to support the upgrading of our infrastructure, advocating for more parks, green space, affordable housing and the protection of our historic resources. I will continue to work with my colleagues and staff to promote and support anti-racism in Glendale. It is the utmost importance that we all respect humanity, that is, we all respect each other. I look forward to the findings of the Blue Ribbon Panel on Pension Reform, their recommendations and their ideas, how we can strengthen our pathway to dealing with this issue. This year, after more than four years of planning, we will experience the groundbreaking of the Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center. This is a huge, huge accomplishment for all involved and it will be a great center of pride in our community. So I see great potential and new opportunities in the coming year. And finally, I am so deeply grateful for the perspectives, the experiences and the partnerships of our residents and I'm constantly reminded that being a good leader is being a good listener and I am committed to listening to all of your voices. We have a great city and I look forward to Glendale remaining a city that we are proud of and that we deserve. I promise to stand up for you and I am humbled and honored to serve for the next year as your mayor with all of you, all of you, all of you by my side. So I thank you and of course, I want to thank my husband, going to give him a little wave because he's my rock and I love him and thank you. Thank you all. So let's continue our meeting, shall we? What's the next item?
Four would be consent items, including the minute to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes. And what's the next item?
Five would be city council and staff comments.
My colleagues. Would anyone like to? I'm going to ask my colleagues to please raise, you know, we're here tonight, and it's very easy for me to see when your hand is up, so when we're, if we're Zooming, I would hope that you would do the same so we can keep it organized and going slowly. Does anyone have a comment? Mr. Brotman, councilmember? Kasakian, please.
I'll be very brief. I mentioned this last week about the fireworks program in Crescent Valley, which has become the default Glendale fireworks show for July 4th for celebrating our nation's independence. Obviously, everyone has fallen on some very challenging and difficult times, this very popular program as well. And I would like to agenda, one of my colleagues would second it, to bring this item back to see how we can help them financially to make this a reality this year. I know it's maybe not something that we have funds readily available for, given what we're facing. However, if any effort was worthy of us tightening our belts a little to help out, and it would be to celebrate the birth of this resilient nation that we all call our home. And, you know, I just want to say that last year, July 4th, I'm sure many of you felt the way I did, these de facto individual backyard fireworks shows were out of control. There was at times I felt like I was in a war zone, and it kept going. So hopefully, by having one singular event, which we did not have last year, we can maybe curtail that, where people know that there's someplace they can go to watch fireworks this year.
Not only were they out of control, they were illegal. Correct, Chief? Mr. Golanyan?
Madam Mayor, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. Councilmember Kasakian, you actually did bring this item up last Tuesday, and you did get a second, so it's on our follow-up list. We are planning on bringing a report back on the 26th of April. I have been in communication with Steve Pierce of that committee, and so I understand what their financial needs are and what the situation entails. So we'll put all of that in a report for your consideration.
So Steve Pierce is going to be working on the fireworks this year. Wonderful. That's great. Okay, and any other my colleagues? None? No comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Agajanian?
I just forgot those who were here to say thank you. I should have said it before, but however, regardless what now is also, I can say from Julian van Meiden, thank you for this past year that we worked together. Chief Lanzus, Fire Chief, Chief Carl Povolitis, which I feel safe since he is here and he has a gun with him. So Yazdan Imrani, our Public Works Department Director, and Huri Chirapetian, who for the past year worked hard, and I asked her to do different tasks. And also John Taktalian, our Assistant City Manager. Thank you. Thank you for the hard work. And I just can't remember our officer down there. I forgot his name. But however, thank you. He's busy, but it's okay. Thank you very much for the last meeting and meetings before. Thank you very much, everybody.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I understand that we have a staff comment, which I think is going to be very exciting and very interesting, and I hope that everyone will pay attention to this. Mr. Golanyan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask Eliza Papazian, our Public Information Officer, who has an announcement to share, like you said, very exciting announcement regarding vaccination sites.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Divine and councilmembers. We do have an exciting announcement tonight. Starting April 11th, this weekend, eligible residents of Glendale and surrounding communities will be able to receive their COVID-19 vaccination through what we are calling the Jewel City Vax Clinic. It's a mass vaccination site at the Glendale Community College with a capacity to administer 10,000 vaccinations per week. The city of Glendale, Adventist Health Glendale, and Glendale Community College collaborated to operate the clinic on the college campus parking structure, which is located off of Mountain Street. The clinic will be held 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Thursdays through Sundays. The site is not a drive-through site. You can drive and park, arrive on foot, or come by public transportation or rideshare. Vaccinations are going to be provided by appointment only, and anyone who lives or works in LA County and who's eligible for vaccination will be able to make an appointment by visiting myturn.ca.gov. And as requirements for the vaccine evolve, the website can also help users check their eligibility. So that concludes my comments, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. My question is, is the only way they can make an appointment is online?
So, yes, for now, but we are actually working on a phone number, and it might actually be through the county system that's set up in place today because we are using the same My Turn system. But more information to follow on that one. The appointment-making and the website, including as well as the phone number, will be included on our website, as well as any communication that we put out via our various platforms.
Okay, Thursday through Sunday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Glendale Community College?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, Alexa, is this available for any resident of Los Angeles County?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman, Mayor Divine, this is open to all county residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good news. Very good news. I do want to mention a big thank you to our fire department because I think under the direction of Chief Lanzus, they've just been doing extraordinary work during this pandemic with delivering food and vaccines and just being there for our residents when they need them. So thank you so much, Chief. Okay, next item.
Mayor, the next item is community event announcement, three-minute portion. I do not have any callers at this time. Would you like to wait about 30 seconds to 45 seconds?
Yes, we can wait. Yes, thank you. I guess while we're waiting, I could also give kudos to Chief Povolitis as well for our police department because you're doing a fabulous job out there, too. I know we're, you know, we're always hearing about traffic violations, speeding, and all sorts of other infractions, and I know that you're out there beating the pavement, rolling those motorcycles and cars, and we all thank you. We appreciate the hard work your force is doing. Any callers?
No, Mayor, no callers.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on then to new business or to the next item.
Next item would be seven, adoption of ordinances, seven A management services regarding ordinance of the city of Glendale, amending Title 8 of the Glendale Municipal Code, that Chapter 8.42 to prohibit the use of polystyrene and single-use plastic products in the serving of prepared food at certain city-managed, city-run concessions or at city-sponsored events located on the city-owned or controlled facilities.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan, very proud of this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. This was, this item was introduced earlier in another meeting, and this is just a request to adopt the ordinance. And David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, is on the call if you have any questions or would like clarification.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I just wanted to ask just one thing. Yeah, thanks. Just a request, and I brought this up last time, is if you could track any exemption requests that come in, whether you approve them or not, and periodically update us. I think there, it's unlikely that we'll have a lot because I think most of the items are, most of the alternatives to the single-use plastics are commercially available at a reasonable price. There should not really be a great argument for hardship, but let's see how it goes. I'd definitely like to monitor that. And I don't know if this is possible, but if we could also kind of get some sense of requests for utensils and straws, because we're making those on a request-only basis. If we could, I don't know if there's some way that the vendors could report, you know, how many they're handing out. Think about it, because it would be, it would be helpful to know, are people finding they just don't need those items, or are people requesting them a lot? But anyway, yeah, that's really it. I'm glad, I'm glad we're doing this, and I hope the audience can all see we're using glasses now, not plastic water bottles. And we just had a reception, and it was all on ceramic plates and silverware, and we're using our dishwasher, so it can be done.
It is doable. It is doable. So we have, the ordinance has been introduced by Councilmember Agajanian?
Councilmember Brotman?
I introduced it last.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh. Well, he moved it, but you introduced it, and that's.
You want to move it?
No.
I just tried to move it.
Ms. Van Meiden?
Yes, Mayor Divine and members of the city council, there was one additional cleanup I wanted to note, and that was a cleanup that had been discussed previously in a whereas, where there was a removal of some language from the third recital. That same language that was agreed to be removed as part of the purpose paragraph, so it would just reflect on Paragraph C of 8.42010. The words, although plastics are generally recyclable, those words would also be removed to be consistent with the wherethes in the recitals.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Okay, then. All right. So we have an introduction for the ordinance, and.
Motion and second. Motion and second, seconded by Councilmember Agajanian.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes. Great. Congratulations, everyone. Good move. Next item, please.
Next item would be eight action items, A to Glendale Water and Power regarding substation transformer, low-tap changer, and regulator inspection, repair, and testing service. One resolution to dispense with the bidding procedures set forth in Glendale Municipal Code GMC Section 4.12.010A and authorize the purchasing administrator or is designated to solicit competitive bids and execute an agreement pursuant to GMC Section 4.12.010A for substation transformer, low-tap changer, and regulator inspection, repair, and testing services.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council, as it was read into the record, this is merely a request to suspend our standard bidding procedures and authorize our purchasing administrator to solicit still competitive bids for these services and equipment. Greg Kunit, our interim general manager, and Dan Skorza, both are on the call if you'd like an overview of the item and/or have any questions of them.
Are there any questions? Would you like an overview, or are you ready to move the item?
I would like to move the item.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item would be A to B, Community Development Regarding Direction on the Future of the Slow Streets Programs. One motion directing staff on the future direction of the Slow Street Program.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mayor Divine, members of city council, as you recall, this item was presented to you recently, and we received, staff received some direction, and they have gone back and made some modification to the original proposals, and we are bringing it back for further clarification and to receive, to seek additional direction from council before we finalize the initiative and the process. Going to turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, for a presentation.
Mr. Calvert?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As mentioned, council had asked for some additional information regarding some other options for how we could move forward with the Slow Streets Program in a more permanent way. So we did a little bit of investigation to understand, oh, my apologies, I think I just stopped sharing that. We did additional investigation regarding a couple of the options and have recently come into some opportunities to be able to move forward with additional programs as well, which we would like to be able to get direction from council this evening. Those two requests that we had received in direction from our last meeting were to investigate options and opportunities to use K-rails as a means to slow down traffic and to also look at potential street paintings, such as crosswalk paintings and intersection improvement paintings. So ultimately, at the end of this presentation, we would like to obtain direction from council whether or not to, again, either terminate and remove this program, terminate and maintain it, or move towards a permanent program with some of the options that have been presented. This is the Slow Streets Program in its current stage. These were the A-frame sawhorse signs where the slowdown sign was posted to remind motorists to slow down. Really, again, as mentioned earlier by Mayor, or former Mayor Agajanian, to really remind motorists to slow down for pedestrians and cyclists who may be using the right of way in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. This program has been very well received by the community. We've received many positive comments and support, and we continue to receive requests to continue moving forward with this program, but there have been some challenges. As we acknowledged in the last meeting, the durability of these signs is not that great, especially when they have been hit. The kind of sustainability of them, not necessarily optimal, has led to a lot of maintenance issues, which we hope some of these permanent solutions would resolve. So the first often that we looked into were K-rails. You're very familiar with these being used for our Fresco dining program. We were asked to look at these from both this kind of concrete perspective, but also water-filled plastic barriers as well. Both of these follow essentially the same dimensional standards. They range from between 24 and 36 inches wide at the base. They come in about five to eight-foot lengths. They're approximately two feet six inches tall. When we investigated these, what we found is that, the pro here is that obviously these are very, very durable, regardless of whether they're concrete or plastic filled with sand or water. Obviously, this is going to be very resilient to automobiles if they do happen to hit them. The con that we found here is that these are going to make impassable conditions in a lot of different streets. Not all of our streets are of the same width. We found that, and then we'll show some diagrams here in just a moment, it's going to make turning movements very, very challenging, if not impossible in some cases. They're also going to be very labor-intensive. If we use the concrete K-rails, that would require a crane to move those into position, the bouncing of the sign, some sort of aesthetic enhancement, as we've seen with the Al Fresco program as well. If we use the plastic.
Okay. We've lost Mr. Bradley.
Mr. Calvert?
Calvert?
If they were to be filled with water.
Bradley, we kind of lost you there for about one, maybe 30 seconds. If you can go back to the last comments you were making about the K-rails.
Yes. Did you hear the pro side of that, and just, you just need the con?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So the con would be that they're going to be very labor-intensive. To put a concrete one in place is going to require cranes. There's going to need to be some sort of aesthetic enhancements and improvements similar to what we've seen with the K-rails that have been used for Al Fresco dining. If we were to use the plastic K-rails and fill them with water, we would have issues in terms of draining those. They're going to have to be drained properly to really essentially prevent flooding streets. If there was damage to them that caused them to leak, that is also going to cause us some challenges as well. And then more importantly, the dimensions of them are going to create conditions that are going to be impassable on many of our streets. To try to highlight that, this is kind of a horizontal configuration, if you will. To try to highlight that, this is kind of a horizontal configuration, if you will, kind of going across the streets. In this case, it would be very hard if there were two cars on the street. This is kind of a typical street width for Glendale, especially when there are cars parked on it. The ability to be able to turn into that space is going to present a pretty significant challenge. You can see here is that car having to have to make its kind of turn and move it and rotate a bit. Odds are, it's going to find itself in very, very close contact with either parked cars or any other cars that may be on the street at the same time. In a more kind of linear orientation, while the width of it is much more narrow, again, the depth of that is going to create some pretty significant challenges when automobiles are turning onto the streets. As you kind of see with the two right cars, they would come into conflict with one another. We think this would be a great idea in terms of durability and really slowing automobiles down. Our concern, our worry here is that it is just going to make a number of conditions impassable if we were to try to use it, and we may not be able to use it in all that many situations. Because, again, this program has really been oriented towards residential streets in general. The other alternative we were asked to consider were street paintings. These come in a variety of kind of forms and fashions. The example that I'm using here, this is intentionally painted essentially with a 3D effect, a little bit of visual trickery, if you will. So as automobiles are approaching, they tend to slow down. They see this, they're curious if they're going to hit something or not. But also, as mentioned in prior meetings and some of our discussions about pedestrian safety, the more visual distractions that are present, the slower automobiles tend to travel. So these can be effective. They can also serve as a means to beautify a neighborhood. This is a little bit of a larger-scale version of this, painting the entire intersection.
Madam Mayor? All right. So I will wait until you.
Mr. Calvert?
You want to finish?
Yes. Yes. Would you like to ask now, Mr. Calvert?
Whatever you prefer. I don't mind.
Go ahead. And Mr. Calvert, Mr. Agajanian has a question.
Yeah, I just want to, I asked yesterday also, this is a street painting. I was trying to find this. Still, I have a problem. You said this is only in Europe, not in the United States, this system of having such that.
This example that I'm using here is from Europe with the kind of 3D illusion. But they've also been used in other cities. Philadelphia has done some, Seattle, Portland. San Jose has a number of them at their kind of pedestrian crossings along a certain corridor. It's a very common strategy, not always done in a 3D perspective. They can also be done in a kind of a flat, more of a beautification improvement as well.
But this will help definitely, that drivers will slow down if they come to a crosswalk. Drivers from a distance.
That is true. And that's actually one of the comments, or one of the pros that will.
You got cut off.
Yeah. He'll be getting to those, Mr. Agajanian.
We lost you.
Yes, we did, again.
We lost you, Bradley.
My apologies. I interrupted. I think cut out there for a moment. Did I miss another question?
Yes, I believe so. Did he answer your question, Mr. Agajanian?
Yes, I was saying, this is a good way to slow down the traffic. Is this something, I guess, the easiest way to bring to drivers' attention? This will be great. Have you ever looked into it, at how much it costs to do this?
Ms. Agajanian?
Yes, we will actually come out in just a moment.
Yes. This is in the report. He'll be getting to that, Mr. Agajanian. Go ahead, Mr. Calvert.
So, again, these can come in a variety of shapes and forms. This is a much larger-scale improvement. You can see that this includes the crosswalk as well as a full-on intersection. These can also serve as a city beautification kind of initiatives. They can come in many different forms, many different shapes. Often, artists can be hired to come in and create these. There are companies that can come in and put these in a thermal plastic kind of fashion, as well as direct painting onto the street. So there's a number of different options that exist. What we found is the pro here, as mentioned by Mayor Agajanian, it does slow traffic, regardless if there's that 3D illusion component or not. It also can serve as an aesthetic enhancement when done appropriately and done properly. The challenges that we saw on these were that there is a diminishing return on effectiveness. And that's going to be the case with pretty much any strategy we're going to pursue. But once drivers become familiar with these paintings, whether they realize it's a kind of a 3D illusion or not, you know, the ability to slow everyone down starts to diminish a little bit, because people are now familiar, they know what they're coming across. The other aspect of these is that they can be costly. A simple crosswalk is going to run about $500. If you recall, some of the other alternatives, which we'll go through in a moment again, are around $130 or less. So they can be more costly. If we're looking at a full, large-scale crosswalk and intersection, or if we're trying to bring an artist on board to do these, they can range all the way up to $125,000. One thing I'd like to mention on this, and this is something that can be combined with other strategies related to the pedestrian plan. If you look at that image on the bottom right, you can see there's a painting on the street. Essentially, this is a simulated curb bulbout. It uses delineators to create that sort of physical barrier, and the painting is intended to mimic that curb bulbout, and also to be a city beautification kind of element. What we have done, and in fact, you've received some information in an email from the public regarding Los Angeles moving forward with some of these, and here's one of the examples. What I'd like to mention on that, and really the street painting in general, is that we have recently discovered some opportunities for additional funding to pursue projects such as these. So the communication you received that was kind of advocating for this, what I would like to say is that these two programs, the Slow Streets with the signage that had been proposed and recommended at the prior meeting, which we'll go through in a moment, is not mutually exclusive from being able to do these kind of programs as well. Last summer, when we started the Slow Streets program, we did ask council for direction regarding demonstration projects, which this is something that qualifies under that. Council did say yes to move forward with that. We have now identified that funding. In fact, we were given confirmation today that we can pursue and acquire it. So we, in theory, could do both the Slow Streets program in its form of the signs, as well as a program such as this. If council did direct us to move forward with a program such as this, street paintings, delineators, simulated curb bulbouts, staff could return to council with identified locations before moving forward and deploying those. I just wanted to make that clear, that this is not an either-or kind of situation, that we do have the opportunity now to be able to move forward with both. So, similar to the last presentation, when we looked at the K-rails, seeing the kind of challenges that were associated with those, now identifying opportunities to move forward with these painted streets, these painted crosswalks, these painted intersections, staff is recommending that we do move, or that the council moves forward with the permanent Slow Streets program in this form as one of the options. The delineators that are mounted to the street with a new sign, redesigned sign, as we had mentioned before, a little bit more visible reflectivity, all the qualities that council had specified, those that we know that we need for safety, would be used on wider streets, streets where it's appropriate and where this would fit. On narrower streets, we could pursue this option, this alternative, where we would mount the signs to signposts. And for the next steps on this, if council does desire to move forward with a program, a permanent program, essentially providing direction regarding this signage here. If council would like us to return with more information and recommended locations for street paintings. Both of these are going to come from outside funding sources, so this is not coming from the general fund regardless. We would create new criteria for these signs, really based on, as we had mentioned in the prior presentation earlier in March, really prioritizing equity, trying to have improved outreach to South Glendale, recognizing that a majority of these signs did originally land in the north side of town, and prioritizing streets with insufficient pedestrian infrastructure as well. So ultimately, the alternatives are to, again, either terminate the program and remove all signs, essentially terminate the program but leave the signs in place but no longer offer maintenance or maintaining. So essentially, they would just go beyond their useful life, and we would remove them after damage or vandalization. Or to create a permanent program, and my apologies, I didn't update C and D there, really about the pole-mounted signs as well as the street-mounted signs. And then, if council would like to give us direction regarding the opportunities for painted intersections, painted crosswalks, simulated curb bulbouts. That concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Calvert. So I'll take questions. Ms. Agajanian?
Okay. Can you go to page, Mr. Calvert, page 11, and then to page 10? Are those, page 11 and 10, are those signs, slowdown signs, are they metal? Or they are plastic? What kind of material are they?
I'm not sure of those specific examples. What we would ultimately do is put this out for a bid and acquire information from potential contractors who would install these and determine whether a metal or a plastic sign would be more beneficial. Regardless, we would like to see reflectivity incorporated into that, to make sure that there's high visibility in the evening. But we would determine the mounting of the base and the actual sign material through that bidding process.
Okay. However, if you can show page 10 is what my concern is. I mean, that's a good sign. People will see it. But if it's a metal, I'm sure one day somebody will hit that, and that will fly. And I don't know what's going to happen then in the middle of the street. One day, some sort of accident may happen there, and if it's a metal, that will fly and will be very dangerous for people around, if they're going to be around that sign.
Was that a question for Mr. Calvert?
Is there any, did you get my question?
As with any sign, it would propose or pose a potential challenge if they were to be hit. In most cases, we do use metal signs. That is something that we would take into consideration for the bid. If it's council's desire, then we would make sure as part of that bid to specify that we would want plastic signs if that is the desire of the council.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brodmann?
Yeah, thank you, Bradley. Oh, Arm, you don't really need to put it up, because he actually already put up the picture that I was thinking of putting up. But, yeah, a few comments. One, I do support making this permanent. I like the center-of-the- roadway sign. I'm not really sold on those signposts, whether they really have any value at all, because I think most drivers won't see them. I'm not opposed to them, but they just aren't that appealing to me. But I love, love, love the street painting, and wonder if we could rope in the Arts and Culture Commission, because I think some of those people have raised this in the past, and they would certainly like to get involved. And maybe we can deal with some of the cost issue by having some local artists do things that they may be, you know, proud to have their work on the streets of Glendale and not have to charge for it. On the issue of the diminishing returns from that example that you gave with, in LA, or you had another example where you had the kind of painted bulbout, and then you had those delineators or ballers there. So I agree with the diminishing returns issue if you don't have the ballers. But if you have those there, that does effectively continue on as having the effect of a bulbout. So I think that's a really great approach. And even if you do have diminishing returns, you still have the art, which I think we will all appreciate. And the last thing I'll say is, part of what LA is doing is they've come up with this fairly complex scoring methodology to determine which treatments are going to be placed in what order. And if, you know, we probably don't have to do something as complicated as they've done it. But I think it'd be good to have some kind of a scoring methodology where we focus on equity. We focus on areas that are park poor, lower income, higher propensity of renters, people who don't necessarily have as much access to space. And maybe use some kind of formula to decide where we're going to, you know, roll these out, where we're going to make our greatest efforts, especially when we talk about the painted, street painting options, because I think that would really be something that South Glendale really deserves more than any other area of the city. So that's basically all I have to say. But I love it, and I support moving forward.
Thank you, councilmember. Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's too bad the old K-rel suggestion didn't work out. I thought that would certainly teach those errant drivers that are running over those signs a good lesson. I read the report, and it's confusing as to how that water in the K-rel would have to be treated as contaminated waste, apparently. You have to have special disposal methods. You can't just dump it in the storm drain, which is weird. The painting is certainly attractive. My classmate from Occidental moved on to New York City, Janet Sadek Khan, and made quite a name for herself by using those type of painting techniques throughout the city of New York. My question is, and it's a little bit disappointing that they're so expensive. Where, what sort of funding sources are you looking at for that? You said you have some funding sources.
So our, it would be a funding that would have been available for this year. Since we are not able to do those kind of large-scale events, can now be repurposed for essentially programs and projects that could lead to permanent improvements. If you recall from the citywide pedestrian plan, there were recommendations for locations and opportunities to do these kind of temporary improvements in order for us to collect data, test some of the proposed solutions as part of the pedestrian plan. And these fit right into that kind of realm of how that funding can be repurposed.
So it's money we haven't used, that has not been utilized, that we're going to repurpose? So please keep me posted on that, especially when it comes to the funding. I know Metro has a lot of money for different, in different funds that can be purposed for this sort of work, whether it's active transportation, intersectional safety, things like that. Please let me know that stuff early, and I can work very hard to get some funding for that if we have some funding shortfalls. So let me know. Just let me know, so I can work on it. And I think chances are, we'll be able to get some funding. And, you know, I hope we can expand this program, because it looks like it's not only attractive, but it sounds like it's going to cause a great deal of slower traffic, and that's exactly what we're looking for. Just keep me in the loop, earlier than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So thank you for this report. I do think that we do need, we need to put all the options on the table, whatever it will take to slow drivers down. We've had fatalities. We've had young children hit in front of schools. It's, there's an imperative. We need to really look hard at how we implement these. And in terms of the optical illusions, which I've spoken about a number of times, because I believe it's cost-effective, seeing the higher end of that cost is a little concerning to me. I can certainly understand wanting to pay artists a good, a fair amount of money for producing something that'll be used in the city. But I also would like to challenge staff to perhaps engage our creative community in the city and have them perhaps give back in a way, in terms of a design. We have an amazing pool of talent here in Glendale, in terms of artists and animators who work for the various studios. It's one of the advantages of being here in the heart of the capital of entertainment, world capital of entertainment. And I'm sure talking to folks, or putting it out there in the right circles, will have some creative designs brought to us that we may not have to pay top dollar for, from our own residents. And what better than to have our own creative minds here give back to the city, and of course, compensate them, but perhaps not compensate them to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, whatever the case may be. It would also be pleasant to see some of our cultural heritage, whether it be Armenian or Latino or AAPI, represented in some of those painted bulbouts, which I think are also nice, and they add a certain aesthetic. When you go to Chinatown in. When you go to Chinatown in downtown Los Angeles, you see painted crosswalks that have designs with Chinese and Asian motifs. And I think something like that along, you know, where the Artsakh and Broadway intersection is would be delightful, and even one along Harvard where that leads into the library and the future museums, something akin to a design of an Armenian traditional rug or tapestry, which would be very nice and would add some color and some culture to what would be an otherwise drab blacktop. In terms of the signs, I do, I was fine with the A-frame signs as long as there was some flashing for me. The key is visibility and, you know, making these signs permanent is fine, but if it's hit and it's damaged, and I believe it's been spoken about, it could end up causing potholes or doing more damage, then having those A-frames, I still have concerns about because I don't want to embark on something that I think will, we hope will have a certain outcome only to end up doing more damage than we intended. However, I'm inclined to support having, you know, it sounds like the majority of my colleagues support something more permanent. I actually like the K-rail filled with water or the plastic barriers filled with water. I thought that would be an easier thing to remove when the time comes. But, you know, if it's something that communities want and neighbors are for it, certainly. In terms of outreach to South Glendale, I do want us to be very careful how we approach this, to really engage the community, to get people out, you know, put on your walking shoes and go door-to-door and talk to folks and drag them out of their apartments to come out and see how their neighborhoods will be impacted. I don't want us to go down there with a savior attitude and impose something with values that may not be values that are embraced by the individuals and their needs in those communities, but to truly understand what are their concerns, how would they like it? I do know that they want traffic slowed down. You talk to anyone in South Glendale and they'll tell you that people drive too fast, there's issues with parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the solutions have to also be acceptable to the communities where we want to place them. That truly goes for throughout the city. And again, I think of the Welcome to Glendale marker in Chrysena Valley. That became an automobile target on a number of occasions when we kept putting it up every time it came down. So I think we should talk to and do outreach to those communities to make sure what works for them. But yes, certainly focusing on the south part of Glendale where we have issues, areas where people have been hit and there's a danger of possibly it occurring again, and painted bulbouts and optical illusions are fine by me. And I do want to say, I think that Bradley, I understand, Mr. Calvert, what you're saying about optical illusion only being temporary. Sure, people are going to get used to it and maybe blow through it, but, you know, if it causes even a 10% or 15% reduction in people speeding down the street for a very minimal cost, I think it'll be money well spent. Thank you.
Mayor Devine, I do have a caller on the line.
Okay. Go ahead. Before I make my comments, let's hear the caller. Alec?
Alec, you're live. Alec?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Alec Bartrosov. I used to be on the Transportation and Parking Commission, transportation planner in the city. I want to, I'm agnostic about whether or not the program will be permanent, but if you do move ahead with permanency, I think you should really focus on the curb extensions. By far, that is going to be the most effective way to calm traffic. I am a participant of the Slow Streets Program. I have one on my street, on Adams, as well as on Lexington. And the signs really do contribute to that diminishing return concern, especially if it's on the side of the street or in the parkway. It has no impact whatsoever. The curb extensions, whether they're painted with artwork or not, whether they have the delineators, that will be the most impactful. And I think because that costs more than just simply putting up a sign, that you should pursue that model that Los Angeles has of having some kind of rubric that evaluates each of the proposals and determines which ones are the highest need. So including things like income, density, population density, as well as access to open spaces and parks, that kind of levels out the playing field so that, you know, with these precious resources that we have, we're really putting them where it makes the most impact. So I really hope that you focus on the curb extensions that really will make the most difference in slowing traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alec, for sending in the information that you did to all of us. It was very helpful and very informative, and especially the pictures that showed the artwork, and I think that's swaying a lot of us in that direction. I can see that my fellow council members feel that we should create a permanent program. I agree totally. I think that we've had a lot of good comments on our Slow Street Program, so I think we should move forward. I agree with everything that's been said. I love the painting. I did want to mention that I thought that we should get the Arts and Culture Commission involved in this. You know, they did the, they do the utility boxes, and I think they could do a very similar program with our, with our street painting. And I think that, again, could, would be an economic way of getting around this high price of painting. And I want to ask, Mr. Najarian, is your friend still in New York or is she back here?
She was with, well, she was with Mayor Bloomberg. And she made, she made quite an impact on the city in terms of traffic calming.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Now she's with the Bloomberg, of course, when de Blasio came in, she was removed. She was Transportation Commissioner.
Oh, I see.
She's with the Bloomberg Institute now, which is like a think tank.
Yes. Yeah, we have some dealings with them.
But she was a local.
But she's not here now, so we can't.
No, I believe she's in New York.
Okay, all right.
Grab her, you're saying. Recruit her for some ideas.
Exactly. Yes, yes, you know.
Well, we'll look into that. Maybe she's available.
Why not? We, and it's, everybody's correct, all my colleagues are correct, that we have some great talent here in our city. And I think if we structure that, if the Arts and Culture Commission and our staff, Mr. Bradley, and get together and come up with a real good, kind of an idea or a plan on what's the design, what kind of design, et cetera, keep it all kind of compatible with everything, that I think it's a great idea. I also, I want to ask Bradley, what's the difference between plastic delineators and plastic ballards? When you say a ballard, are you talking about the long, or the delineators are just a simple, kind of like a?
In some ways, we use it interchangeably, but technically, the delineator is the kind of narrow, tall posts that you saw in some of those images. If you look in that packet you had received in an email, there's kind of some shorter squatter, round ones. That would be more in line with a true ballard, if you will.
Okay, okay. So I think delineators around the artwork is a great idea, and I also think it will slow traffic and maintain, you know, keep the life of the painting alive. And what could be better than having more art in our city? I think everyone would be happy with that. I would support a program which would focus on the highest need corridors, and I will leave that up to staff to come up with a way of making that calculation. So that would be my, and I also like the permanent street signs, you know, not on the posts, on the street. I do support those, so I would like to, I agree. I think, Mr. Brotman, you mentioned that. And I don't know, Mr. Najarian, were you in favor of those, the street, the permanent street?
I'm in favor of trying it out. Well, you know, hopefully, we won't have the impacts that Mr. Kusakian talked about, the pavement, potholes and mayhem, but it's worth a try.
Well, we have a great Public Works Department, and they can go out there and fill those potholes just like that, right? So I think we've given staff direction. Mr. Calvert, how do you feel about that?
To summarize, moving forward with the permanent signs.
Permanent signs.
Center of the street. And then we would return with more information regarding the curb bulbouts and paintings. We believe that we want to do a little bit of investigation in terms of the scope, scale, and priority of locations, so that's something we would bring back to council in the near future.
Okay. And Mr. Galanian, with Measure S funding, we could use it for infrastructure, can't we? That's one of our?
Yes, Madam Mayor, definitely. That's one of the components that we have talked about over the years, quality of life elements that can be used by Measure S monies.
Very, very good.
But Mr. Najarian has promised to get us measure funds.
That's true. So we won't have to use?
You have to ask for it first.
We won't have to use our Measure S money.
We'll work on it. We'll get the money.
Good, okay. Well, let's think that together we can, we can get this accomplished and funded. Councilmember Kusakian?
Madam Mayor, I think that one of the things I would like to ask staff to also look into for the future is, in terms of, I personally am very concerned about the safety of our schoolchildren and the areas around schools where people may speed. As I mentioned earlier, we have had tragedies, and I'm wondering, has staff explored or looked at possibly installing rumble strips along, around the school areas that would force people to drive slower? They're not quite speed bumps. They will cause a vibration in the car if someone is driving too fast and will inevitably force someone to slow down when driving by some of our schools. It seems like, I only read about, I'm certainly not an expert, I haven't spent as much time studying transportation issues as obviously Councilmember Najarian has and others, but it just, you know, from what I understand, it is a very cost-effective annoyance to drivers, which is, I think, what we sometimes want for the people that may be trying to zip through the areas where children are being dropped off or picked up or trying to cross the street, going and coming to school.
Mr. Galanian?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, that's a great idea. However, the challenge we have with most of our school, if not all of them, are the adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And like you said, these rumble bars generate vibration and loud noise that may be also annoying to our residents. But we will, we will look around and see if we can find a suitable school site that may benefit from that implementation of that strategy.
One of the ideal school sites, I would think, is Hoover-Toll site, where you have two, actually three, school campuses all sandwiched together, but that area, that one strip between Toll and Hoover High School, where we unfortunately have had people injured. And it would be one site I would recommend.
Yep. And maybe just the painting and the ball, the delineators, maybe something like that might help as well, but Mr. Galanian and staff will look into your suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. Okay, so we're looking for a motion directing staff.
I'll move the item.
Second.
For a permanent program.
For a permanent program, yeah.
As discussed.
Okay, so we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Alga Janian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be 10 reports, information, 10A City of Glendale Pavement Management Program Presentation.
Mr. Galanian?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Minister of City Council, this is a very timely discussion and a report that's staff bringing forward, not only infrastructure upgrades and improvements has been a topic of conversation locally at council level, but as well as at federal level. Public Works Department has done a great job of putting this program together, facilitating it, and it's been in the works for a while. Mr. Emrani has been involved personally in this effort, and he's very proud of the outcome. Essentially, I'm not going to yield his thunder, but essentially, this program has been able digitally and electronically evaluate the condition of the pavement of all of our streets and alleys and has generated recommendations and scenario, or the scenarios for the future as Mr. Emrani will discuss in more detail. Mr. Emrani?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, this is a project that we're really looking at as our flagship project since I joined the staff here at Glendale, that we wanted to have an automated way of measuring the distresses on our streets and have a complete inventory of all of our pavement and their condition, basically. So I'll go through a brief overview of this program with you. Thank you. So this is the agenda that we have in terms of...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is an agenda with the overview of our program that I'll go through all these items pretty quickly. We go to the next item, please. So the first one is introduction. And next slide, please. So a pavement management program, or PMP, provides a complete inventory of all of our roads and alleys. It's a computerized listing that basically we identify the distresses that we have, the type of distresses, the quantity and the severity of it on all of our roads. It's a great tool because once we have this information, then we can go through and develop a budget and costing analysis of these streets. And for California, this is a requirement for certain federal funding to do these on an ongoing basis. This is a cover sheet from our past pavement management programs that we've done over the years, and all of these have been what we call windshield surveys. In other words, this was done by staff that basically drove the streets and looked at segments of the streets, recorded the information, and then came back and generalized it to the totality of our streets. Not as accurate as the program that we implemented this past year. Next slide, please. Which is the automated way of basically doing this. And the way this program works is, next slide, please. The truck that you see, the picture here, basically has cameras mounted on top that are pointing 270 degrees around, and they're also pointing down at the ground. And it has a laser device on it that as the truck drives speed limit down the street, it takes continuous pictures and videos, and the laser device basically measures the length with depth of cracks. It's much more accurate and it's very comprehensive. Next slide. And here's another picture. Basically, we use the resultant data on digitally ortho-rectified base maps that we import the data onto and bring it into our GIS system. And speaking of GIS, this is a side view of a GIS program. As you know, with GIS or geographic information systems, you can have many different layers that are overlaid on top of each other, and basically you can do any kind of analysis that you obviously have the data to do so. Here's a zoomed-in view of one of these sample areas that you can actually have GPS locations of all cracks and actual vector data with latitude and longitude. This is an actual picture. Here's the good news, bad news. It's 8,000 by 4,000 pixel resolution. That's the good news. The bad news is 8,000 by 4,000 pixel resolution because you see all the cracks. So this is one of our alleys that is in pretty bad shape, but you can see the clarity of the picture. So next, we're going to talk about Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. Next slide. PCI is a measure, it's a scale that measures the pavement's life cycle. It's a grade between 0 and 100. Anything less than 40, 0 and 40 means the street is in very bad condition, 100 is the top grade, basically. And we basically perform our analysis and provide each street and each segment of the street with a grade so that we can determine the type of rehabilitation that that pavement requires. Here's an index, a visual index. As you can see, the good range of pavement is a score of 86 to 100, satisfactory is 71 to 85, fair is 56 to 70, and 41 to 55 is poor, and less than 40 is very poor to failed. This scale, by the way, is developed by... This scale, by the way, is developed by American Public Works Association in conjunction with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that developed these scales, or this scale. So here's an example of PCI. On the upper-left picture, left corner picture is a picture of Highland Avenue before we rehab it, and the PCI is 60. And on the right is after we rehabilitated the street, and it gets, say, 100. So the lifecycle starts all over again. So now, let's take a look at some of our streets. Our streets, we have a total of 378 centerline miles of streets. Majority of them, over 92% are asphalt. We have some unpaved roads or unpaved... these are mostly alleys. We have concrete, which is 28% of our roads, and we have a little bit of brick. So where do we stand on our PCI? So our history has been pretty consistent. Our... back to going back all the way to 2007, we had a PCI of 73. And we went up to 76 in 2012, and we've declined a little bit to 72. We're right around 72 right now as of this report. Now, how do we compare to some of our neighboring streets and other streets in general in LA County and in California? Well, Glendale sits at 72. City of Los Angeles is 71. Rancho Cucamonga is 70. And Pasadena and Burbank are 60 and 57, respectively. California average is 65. So we're doing relatively well compared to some of the other cities in California. Here's a pie chart of our PCI versus roadway classification. So for, for example, we have a high PCI relatively speaking for our alleys. We have 68 is our PCI for our local roads, 75 for our collectors, 71 for arterials, and 77 for our main streets. Now, next slide. I'm going to show you PCI as we've overlaid it in GIS on our streets. Here, this map is our maintenance zones. We have divided the city into 12 maintenance zones. That's how we do our pavement rehab on an annual basis. Next slide. And this is a color-coded map of our roads. The red and the dark red means the streets are in not very good shape. The greens and lighter colors means that they're in good shape. So again, you see a mixed bag. We have good streets, and we have some streets that are on a verge of going from fair to poor. So it's, you know, it's a mixed bag. But again, overall, our PCI is 72. Pavement performance curves. These basically have an important role in telling us where we go with our budget analysis. When we get the data, we map these or we develop these curves to determine what's our deterioration rate for what we call our family of curves for arterials, for our collectors, for our residential streets. These curves tell us that, for example, if the rate of the curve or the slope is too steep, that means the required budget to fix them is going to increase. And if the rate of deterioration is relatively flat, the required budget will be less. In pavement lingo, we call them a reverse S curves. Next. So this is our overall arterial and collector pavement performance curve. And as you can see, there is a line, there's a yellow line there that's called the critical PCI. Critical PCI basically tells us anything above that inflection point on the curve does not require as much funds to fix the roads. Anything below it, basically, you're going in the, you know, the critical portion of the curve. And our critical PCI for Glendale is 65. Next slide. So we use the PCI, as I mentioned before, to come up with how to or what kind of pavement treatments we would use. In the upper ranges of the PCI, 90 to 100, we use what's called preventive measures such as crack sealing. 80 to 90, we go to slurry seal, which is that thin layer of oil that we put on top of the pavement to seal in the, you know, to seal in its durability, basically. The 70 to 80, we employ additional measures such as chip seal and slurry seal. And then, once you get into anything lower than 70, it's asphalt overlay, anywhere from an inch and a half to two inch of shaving down the top of the asphalt and then overlaying a new layers of asphalt. And then, 40 to 55, it's really heavy overlays, which could involve chip sealing and additional layers of resurfacing, a thicker layer adding on top. And again, anything below 40 is failed, as far as we're concerned, and would require reconstruction of the whole street. So I'm sure at this point, you're asking, well, what is it going to take if we had all the money in the world to fix all of the streets in Glendale? So the answer is $94.3 million. Basically, if we were to fix all the streets that we have and bring them to an acceptable level, it would involve a combination of preventative, global, conventional, and reconstruction. And those are all outlined here with the dollar amount shown. If we add up all of them, it's $94.3 million, which is a pretty high price tag, obviously, that we have. That translates into the lower table, which identifies the different type of, you know, arterials, asphalt, alleys, concrete streets, et cetera. We've divided the cost by those types of classifications, and the totals are shown by, whether it's arterial or residential or alleys. Again, the price tag is $94.3 million in today's dollars. However, obviously, we don't have $94 million. So what we do is we run three different scenarios. We've ran three different scenarios to kind of give you different options that we can approach the pavement rehab for our streets. Here, on the pavement lifecycle, this is that reverse S curve, if, again, you're on the top portion of the curve, it takes... it doesn't take as much money to keep it in that condition. In fact, it takes $1 at that inflection point or, you know, the critical PCI. However, as you go down the curve, it's going to cost up to four to six times more because at that point, the pavement is completely deteriorated. And as we know, anything that's failed, it takes a lot more funds to fix it than if you keep them in good shape when they're in the higher PCI range. So using that... next slide. We ran three different scenarios. We said, well, what happens if we don't do anything? The zero or do-nothing scenario? Well, over five years, our PCI is going to deteriorate from 72 to 51, which is pretty bad. And the deferred maintenance would accumulate every year and increase to, at the end of the fifth year, to $136 million. So obviously, we don't want to do that. So the second option... next slide. Would be our recommendation to maintain a constant PCI. So if we were to keep the PCI at 72, we would need to spend about $9 million per year. You still see on the right-hand side of the table, the deferred maintenance column, that the deferred maintenance is going to continue to accumulate, but it's at a smaller pace. So you would still have about $74.5 million by the end of the fifth year, but it's not as high as the $136 million. And then, the last scenario that we ran, next slide, is maintaining our current budget scenario. Right now, we have about $4 million that we spend every year on our streets. So if we spend $4 million, we're going to drop to a PCI of 60 by the end of fifth year. And our deferred maintenance is going to shoot up again to almost $91 million. So what are our funding sources? Next slide. Our funding sources are essentially the gas tax and SB1 that we receive. Now, although we've received, you know, since 2014, 2015, the funding has increased, and we anticipate getting about just over $9 million in the next fiscal year, the only... a small amount, or roughly a third of it, is only available to do pavement rehab. The remaining funding that we get are spent on improving the curb and gutters, the sidewalks, the driveway and alley aprons, ADA improvements, street tree maintenance, landscaping, utility adjustment, traffic signal improvements, traffic striping, pavement markings, a whole host of other costs that previously we would get from general fund. But since we don't get that any longer, we have to use our current gas tax. So as you can see, only about a third of it, roughly $4 million, goes towards actual pavement rehab. Next slide. So what are our next steps? We've collected the data. That was step one. We analyzed the data. That's step two. We updated our pavement management report, which is where we are right now. The next one is basically developing our five-year capital improvement plan and basically move forward with the implementation plan. So we just wanted to come before you tonight to give you our status report and a progress report on where we are and present you with kind of a picture of what we're facing in terms of our street and our maintenance rehab. And with that, be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Imroni. That was very interesting. The truck is amazing, huh? The one that does the... So our... my question, before I get to my colleagues, I'm sorry. How many, or I guess, percentage-wise or miles-wise, or how many streets do we have between 0 and 40? Wasn't all of those red ones, was it?
No. We have a... if we can go back to the PowerPoint. Let's see if I can move this. Yeah, keep going. To the budget scenarios. Yeah, keep going.
Budgets.
Okay. Yeah, that one. So we have, for reconstruction, about $16 million that we're recommending. Yeah, go back up. Yeah, this one. So $16 million, basically, is for reconstruction. Those are the ones between 0 and 40. So roughly, you know, in terms of the... I don't have the centerline miles exactly here, but it would be about, I would say, 15% maybe of our... or 20%, 50 to 20% of our roads, maybe 15%.
Okay. Do I... thank you. Thank you. Comments, questions from colleagues? Ms. Brotman?
Questions, yeah. So how do you... so when you want to go about prioritizing, are you going to... do you focus on the streets that are really bad, that you want to bring up to a decent level? Or do you kind of... because that... and those cost the most to fix, right? Or do you focus on the ones that are, you know, you want to catch before they get to the point where they're going to start getting really expensive? If you do that, I guess you're just letting the bad ones continue to deteriorate. So how do you make those decisions?
Exactly. That's a great question. So what we do is we use a software program. It's called MicroPaver, again, developed by American Public Works Association and Army Corps. And basically, we input the results of our data into this program. And what it does, it looks at how to stretch the dollars. So it's going to favor the streets that are in better shape, to try to keep them in that condition. And also going to look at all the streets that are above the critical PCI, because those are, quote unquote, cheaper to maintain. Those streets that need reconstruction, they're going to deteriorate. We can't really... we have to kind of put them on hold until we get a... some additional funding that we can focus our efforts on. So really, our efforts is to prevent our streets from going below the critical PCI or getting into the worst condition so that they would require construction. Anything that is already in that range, it requires a lot more funding that we are able to provide to bring them up to 100 again.
Okay. And if I could just continue?
Go ahead.
So another one is, so as you're... so you've got this model that's helping you prioritize where you're going to go first and where you're going to go later. Is there a way to tie that in with our pedestrian plan? And, you know, hopefully, we'll have a new bicycle transportation plan. Tie them together because lots of times, I mean, the best thing is to do all these treatments at once, right? You're repaving a road. You're also maybe doing a lane width adjustment, and you may be doing a bowl out, and you may be doing, you know, a bike lane and stuff like that. Is there a way in that software to kind of link those so that we're getting the best bang for our buck and we're getting implementation of our ped plan and bike plan while fixing the streets at the same time?
Councilmember Brotman, absolutely. That's what we do right now with our current bicycle transportation plan. Any street that we've programmed for rehab, we look to see what the recommendation of the bicycle transportation plan is, and we try to incorporate that. We also look at any kind of underground utilities that may have to be replaced, such as a sewer line or water line or any... or a power line. We, you know, connect with our colleagues over at GWP so that we make sure that we tear up the street only once. And then, we also look at any kind of improvements, traffic improvements. So if it's traffic calming measures or signal installation, we try to incorporate all of that into our project as we move forward. And that's part of the reason that you see those additional costs, that, you know, we have to spend, such as, in addition to utility, relocations or modifications, but curb and gutter reconstruction, ADA improvements, and sewer and water line and storm drain line potentially that we improve. But absolutely, we try to program all of that together.
I think... I'm sorry. I think the question was whether the PMP software is capable... has the capability to mesh those elements into the pavement rehab recommendation?
It does not, unfortunately. The software does not. But what we do is we take its recommendations and basically manually look at what we have and try to incorporate all of that into a project.
Right. Because there's a difference there that's kind of subtle but important. Because what you're saying is, we've got on our list a street that we're... you know, the software tells us this is the next street to do. And now, we're going to look to see whether there's something in the ped and bike plan.
Right.
What I'm talking about is a little bit... a step beyond that, is to say, as you're prioritizing, look for places where we can get extra bang for our buck. Look for places where we can take the opportunity to implement the bike plan and the pedestrian plan. So maybe a certain street segment might have come a little bit later, but because we have an opportunity to do everything, we bring it forward. That's a little nuance, you know, from what you were talking about.
Absolutely. And we definitely will look for those opportunities because the program will generate a list of streets. And we basically tell it the intervals. So for example, we say, over the next five years, and it generates a list of streets for improvement over the next five years. And we can do it by our maintenance zones, and then we look for those opportunities to combine it with other improvements that we have in other BTP, Bicycle Transportation Plan or Ped Plan.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Okay. Well, Mr. Imroni, thank you for this report. Very interesting. And I have to say, you've been... how long have you been with the city now?
End of this month will be two years.
Two years. Time flies.
But who's counting?
I know, I know. But you just jumped into the job like nobody's business. So good, nice job, and thank you for this.
Thank you.
And I hope that we can get more of the streets done than we think we can. Okay. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Next is item 10B, presentation on Riverside Drive Speed Limit Study.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Madam Mayor, members of city council, this was a request...
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, this was a request by you, Madam Mayor, previously, for a study on the speed limit on Riverside Drive. This was scheduled for our presentation last Tuesday, but unfortunately, in the interest of time, we had to postpone it to this week. And I'm going to ask Mr. Imroni again for the presentation on this matter.
And, and if I may, before you give your report, Mr. Imroni, I think the reason, if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason that I asked for this report was because Burbank was changing the speed limit to their section of Riverside Drive. And so in order to just kind of keep that speed limit going, that I wanted a study to see if that would be possible for us and would it be beneficial. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Absolutely, as part of this presentation, we're going to show you what we've done for Riverside Drive, and we're also going to talk about what City of Burbank has done for their portion. I'm going to ask our principal traffic engineer, Mr. Pastor Casanova, to do the presentation.
Thank you. Mayor Devine and members of the City Council, as Mr. Imroni mentioned, tonight I will be presenting an overview of the speed limit on Riverside Drive. In the background, Public Works staff prepared this following presentation in response to the request to investigate the ability of reducing the posted speed limit on Riverside Drive from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. Next slide, please. This slide shows a vicinity map of Riverside Drive that's shown as a black bold line on the exhibit. This segment of Riverside Drive extends easterly city limit, abiding with the city of Burbank, to the southeastern city limit, abiding the city of Los Angeles. The upper right-hand corner of the, of the exhibit, there's a box that shows, goes over some of the existing roadway conditions for Riverside Drive, including the length of the zone. It is just about half mile at exactly .61 miles at 3,260 feet. Streets widths vary in this segment from about 55 feet to 68. There are three traffic signal locations along this, which are at Victory Boulevard, Western Avenue, and Tavas Street. Those are shown as red circles on the exhibit. The posted, the existing posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour, and the types of surrounding development are primarily residential. And being that this section is within the horse overlay zone known as the Riverside Rancho area, it's, has a, it's an equestrian zone. The street classification of Riverside Drive is a community collector, and the average daily traffic volumes are just under 6,000 vehicles per day. Next slide, please. On this slide, Google, Google Street views showing eastbound and westbound Riverside Drive. The upper image is a view of eastbound, on the westerly end, near the city of Burbank limit, and positioned just west of the first speed limit sign. The lower image is a, looking westbound, and positioned near the southeastern portion near the city of LA boundary, and just east of the first 35 mile per hour speed limit sign. As you can see from the images, the configurations are basically one traffic lane in each direction, with a center turn lane commonly referred to as a two-way, painted Class II bike lanes in both directions, and parking on both sides of the street. Next slide, please. In this slide, the standards, codes, and references that are followed when setting the posted speed limits. The CAL, Uniform Traffic Control Devices provides the engineering standards and guidance. The California provides the legal foundation to enforce the posted speed limit. The California Manual on Setting Speed Limits provides guidance on how to prepare the engineering and traffic survey. Next slide, please. Based on the CAL, California Code, an engineering and traffic survey is required to set and enforce the legal speed limit. The Engineering and Traffic Survey measures the prevailing vehicular speeds and establishes the speed limit at or near the percentile speed. Other elements considered in the Engineering and Traffic Survey are roadway configuration, alignment, adjacent land uses, accident history, and traffic volumes. And staff uses the California Manual for setting speed limits that provides additional guidance on how to conduct the engineering and traffic survey. Next slide, please. A significant element of the Engineering and Traffic Survey is, of course, the radar speed survey. The radar speed survey, when it's conducted, it reports the speeds of at minimum of 100 cars in each direction, or minimum 100, and calculates the combined 85th percentile speed of slow traffic. Next slide, please. The California, Uniform Traffic Control Devices provides direction that the posted shall be established at the nearest hour increment of the 85th percentile speed. Can you, next button, I guess, or next option? So going over a couple of examples, if the 85th percentile speed is found on the 80, on the Engineering Traffic Survey to be 37 miles per hour, then the nearest 5 mile per hour increment in that case would be 35 miles per hour, and that would be the recommended speed based on the, on the EMTS. In the next example, if the 85th percentile speed were found to be 1 mile per hour over, which is 38 miles per hour, then that places it closest to the nearest 5 mile per hour increment would be 40 miles per hour. So the recommended posted speed limit in that case would be 40 miles per hour. Next slide, please. There are two options in addition to what I mentioned previously. An option one, that the posted speed limit may be reduced by 5 miles per hour from the 85th percentile speed. In that case, justification is required, and the engineering survey provides the justification and is allowed to consider other related, safety-related factors. Option two can be applied in cases where the nearest 5 mile per hour increment speed limit requires rounding up. And in those cases, the speed limit can be directly rounded down without justification, as long as further reductions are taken. Next slide, please. In this, recent findings for, for a recent Engineering Traffic Survey on Riverside Drive. So the most recent survey was, was conducted and completed on Tuesday, October 28th of last year, 2020. The Engineering and Traffic Survey found an 85th percent of the speed on the speed radar study, up 30 mi, 39 miles per hour combined. So following the standards in the California MUTCD, that number would be rounded up to the nearest four, nearest 5 mile increment, which is 40 miles per hour. And then we, option one is described earlier, and, and the 40 miles per hour was reduced by 5 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. The justification, same slide, please. So the, the Engineering and Traffic Survey considers safety-related factors in taking that 5 mile per, on Riverside Drive, that's painted Class II bike lanes existing, the fact that our, no pedestrian sidewalks in most of the segment, and of course, that this area is within the horse overlay zone known as Riverside Rancho area, we considered equestrian safety. So ultimately, the recommendation based on the EMTS was posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour. Next slide, please. Staff reached out to Burbank to gather comparative information, and a recent traffic survey conducted by Burbank actually showed an 85th percentile of 39 miles per hour, which is the same findings as on the city of Glendale site. Burbank's current Engineering and Traffic Survey that they have in place support a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour, again, as, same as Glendale site. Next slide, please. So, and then considering all the previous elements that we discussed, and based on the findings of the Engineering and Traffic Survey that follow the state of California guidelines and the California Vehicle Code, it is recommended that the posted speed limit on Riverside Drive be maintained at 35 miles per hour. And that setting the speed limit that is legally allowed is not recommended. Next slide. So, member, and members of the City Council, that concludes my presentation tonight, and I would be glad to take any questions at this time.
So, I just have one, one question. So Burbank did not change the speed limit on their section?
Yes, Devine, members of the City Council, that, that is correct. As I reached out to Burbank and discussed their present speed limit and findings, that is correct. Currently, their current Engineering Traffic Survey is for 35 miles per hour.
Okay. Because they have the, you've already used the justification, the, the equestrian and by the cyclist and have already lowered it. Okay, colleagues, any comments? Mr. Broadman?
Yeah, I, question on lane widths. What are the lane widths on, I guess, for the travel lanes? If you could tell me that. I think there's three lanes, right? There's a lane in each direction and then a turn lane in the middle? Is that what I saw?
Yes, Councilmember Broadman, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council, that is correct. There's one traffic lane in each direction, and, and a center turn median often referred to as a two-way left turn.
Yeah. And what are the lane widths? Do you know?
Offhand, I don't have that information. They're, they're, from my recollection, they're either 10 or...
Or what? 10 or?
Or 11.
Oh, okay. So they're already, yeah, because what I was thinking is, and I don't know if this is one of the streets that's on your list for a possible future repair, but I mean, that is one thing you could do, right? You could, you could narrow those lane widths and maybe expand the bicycle path, or the, you know, the, the, the Class II bicycle lane. And that could kind of cause some slowing, and then if you did a street, a speed survey again, you might find you're getting, you're coming out with a lower speed, and then you actually can reduce the speed limit if you wanted to. Just putting that out there. I mean, that's right, because one of the things you could do is, you know, do some of these treatments to try to slow traffic naturally, and then when you do that, you can then justify the slower speed limit.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, thank you for the report. I was surprised at the, the distance that Burbank has. They have hardly any, any section. Our section of Riverside is, you know, almost half, half a mile. Theirs is, what is theirs? Quarter, no, a tenth of the half a mile. So, thank you for the report. We appreciate it, all of us do, I'm sure.
So, Madam Chair, just, and I'll be really brief. I know you probably have some celebrating to do. But I think, thank you, staff, it was definitely worth looking into. If I'm not mistaken, Laura Friedman was also looking at this, trying to see if the speed limit can be reduced even more than the, than five below the 85th percentile. I'm not sure where that is, but it's something if staff can just keep us...
Trying, trying to change the legislation?
Yes.
Yeah, I knew that, yeah.
If I could, yeah, she has a bill. I actually wrote it down here. I think it's AB 2121. She has a bill, but I think they're still updating the language in it, but she's told me that that's exactly what she's trying to do, is give us some more flexibility.
I think she's been trying to do that, working on that for a while.
Yeah, it's not the first time.
Right, right, right. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Imroni. Next item?
Mayor, next item is oral communications. We do have a caller. Oral communications and discussions is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council, council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. I'd remind the caller that it's a five-minute limit. Thank you.
Ms. Valentine, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Victoria Valentine. I am also looking back. Sadly, the city of Glendale was up for grabs this past year. Civic Center locked to the public. A tsunami, a rush, a push for action items, all without public input. Police Department next door most likely had a hard time keeping an eye on these public ghost buildings. Surely City Controller will get this sign-in and sign-out roster sheet that were kept, actions taken while the chamber was abandoned. Now I have a request to the new mayor, having the past year in mind. Would you please make it possible to get seats at the podium for the two individuals that have had their backs turned to the public this past year? Who are they? I couldn't see them.
So Mr. Galanian and our city attorney, which tonight is our...
We could leave.
Well, I never, I never could see their faces. I don't know if they were on Facebook, or texting, or sleeping. Number two, police chief, one in chamber, please offer him a seat at the podium. Show him respect. Glendale residents will be reassured with assertiveness and leadership that their property will be protected from burglaries and trespassers. Why? Especially when Mr. Mayor recently is declaring our backyard as waste of land. Anybody come on and trespass? Now, an incident. Community Development Department had no knowledge of existence of Glendale natural hillside, mainly the 32 acres of it. The senior planner recently gave permission for construction of a Lear Canyon debris basin at Chevy Chase. City of Glendale has no authority over the numerous watershed drains in Glendale. I call L.A. County. Only Los Angeles Public Works can issue the permit for a lawful construction. Finally, okay, now I got this out of my system, finally, personal notice to the City Council and the City Clerk again. And for the last few years, my drinking water is contaminated. The white particles do not melt in water. My drinking water becomes a flurry. Glendale Water and Power has no laboratory, but it is dishing out this drug, this white powder. Most devices needing water in my house have been ruined with calcium deposits. My blood shows dangerous high calcium levels. I like to know how much I am consuming and how it affects my health. Who are we, who are we going to call? Ghostbusters? Does anyone care? Yes, sadly, Glendale was up for grabs this past year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Mr. Galanian, we have good water, don't we? Don't we test our water?
Madam Mayor, we test our water regularly, and staff has been communicating with the City Council regarding concerns about...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for taking care of her. Well, I, again, thank my colleagues, and it was so nice to have all of us here tonight, wasn't it? Let's, yay!
Congratulations.
Let's do, let's, let's do this again, and I look forward to working with all of staff and all of you. And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moving.
Second, second.
We are adjourned at 9:11? 9:11, that's a... 9:11, that's it.